Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order for September 10th, 2025. We are all here this evening. Can we rise from pledge? Okay, first up, Student Council.
Hi, everyone. We're so excited to be back this year. My name's Natalie Christian, and I'm the president of Student Council this year.
I'm Matthew Pallone. I'm the vice president of Student Council. So we had freshman orientation at the end of August. I think we had a great turnout. We showed the students around the school and showed them helpful information from the upperclassman. Just about academics, clubs, sports, everything.
Yep, and then we had our first meeting in the books today. It was really successful. We had to hold it in auditorium because we had such a big turnout. It was really great. We got to start talking about homecoming and all the things that come with that. So following up on that, we went to the all sports meeting last night just kind of to finalize everything. So Cole James, the former president and I, last year, we worked a lot with all sports clubs so that we can start earning some money from homecoming, Student Council itself. So this year, we have to come up with some volunteers and do a few more things for homecoming, and Student Council will be getting money from homecoming. So that's very exciting. It'll be really helpful for us and our other events. And then today at our meeting, we tried something new where we had all of the class officers also speak at the meetings, just so we could try to involve more people in our meetings and kind of make it a space where everybody can share. So every single class brought their news, which was really nice.
We then talked about having a spirit week before pep rally. So we're going to be starting the Friday before with PJ Day, and then Country versus Country Club Day, Dress as Your Type Day, A Class Competition Day. All the classes will have a different theme and rivaling. And then obviously pep rally where everyone will have a different color depending on their class.
Yep, so we voted on all of those days, which was super fun. And then today, we talked about how we can start printing flyers for all of our events because with students not able to use their phones, we have to start getting our information out some way. So we're going to work on printing flyers to announce all these spirit days so that everybody is aware of what's going on. And then the last thing we just did today was just generally brainstorm how we can make this pep rally better than last year and more fun and exciting. So we just had different students bring their ideas to the table, and we're really excited to keep coming back all school year. So see you guys next week or two weeks from now. Thank you.
Quick question, Natalie. Now, just thinking about the council. Does every year the vice president is a junior, and then the president is a senior, and we rotate so that they get exposed? I'm just wondering like the flow generally.
Traditionally, yes, but it's not like a set rule that we have. It just kind of works out nicely. I definitely think last year being the vice president helped set me up for success this year. But it's not a requirement that we have.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Just a recommendation for spirit, too. Mr. Harkin said he would take a pie in the face.
He did for November. Hi, teacher, and I. So we're going to hold him to that. Thank you.
Moving on for the draft minutes of the meeting from August 26th. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Alright, so can I get a motion to approve? Kathy, second, RP? And all those in favor? And then those abstaining? Moving into the board forum.
I'm all set.
I'm all set, other than I'm looking forward to hearing whatever one has to talk about.
Glad to be back. Grateful to be here right now. Great to see a crowd, you know, so interested in a board meeting. So like RP, I'm interested in hearing what everything is about too, so.
Welcome. I am all set.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Nothing, thank you.
All set, thank you.
Okay, moving into the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and our operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. So Logan Messina?
Hello, my name is. My name's Logan Messina. I'm a senior currently at Columbia High School. Do I give my address now? Two six six nine Reno Road. There are two points I wish to bring up. The first being their current Bluetooth device ban and the current status of Bluetooth devices at Columbia. In the Students in Personal Electronic Devices Policy, Policy 5695, there is no mention of wireless or Bluetooth devices at all. It simply relates to internet-enabled devices. So, but at Columbia, it's still being enforced that you're not allowed to use Bluetooth devices, and I feel that it should either be written in policy or not a rule that's enforced. In addition to that, I also believe that it shouldn't be a policy in general, as there's no practical difference between wired earbuds and wireless earbuds. One is not more of a distraction than the other. I've also heard it brought up that wireless earbuds require a phone, and you're not allowed to use your phone. However, there are wireless MP3 players. You can get them from Walmart for like 10 bucks. So I feel that it's just an unnecessary inconvenience to students and one that should be addressed in some form. My second point is in relation to the Yonder Pouches. The current policy does dictate that all students must use Yonder Pouch. However, I feel that that doesn't help set students up for success out of high school, as once they get to college, you're not going to have a crutch to ride. You're not going to have the crutch of a Yonder Pouch of your phone being away. So I believe that Yonder Pouches should be used more as a disciplinary tool as opposed to enforced for all students. Because I believe that if a student has the self-control to have their phone on their person or in their bag, depending on the legal requirements for what it must be, that that should be allowed, that if you can have the self-control to not touch it, I feel like that reinforces good values for college or a job. And this is coming from someone who was had had a screen issue freshman and sophomore year, and I found that it just being taken away without any real learning experience, just it's gone now. Once I get it back, I use it again. It just skyrockets back up. So I feel that reinforcing self-control is a more productive stance on that. And that is all. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question. Sorry, the Bluetooth thing.
Yes.
You're talking specifically about headphones, or is there something else that you're?
Mostly about headphones. However, I also do worry that if there is a policy put, because currently there is nothing written.
Yeah, I was just curious what else you would use Bluetooth for.
Bluetooth mouse or a Bluetooth most mostly headphones, but also there are other Bluetooth devices that I worry if it's just generalized and put in policy that Bluetooth devices are not allowed, that that could also just create an inconvenience, and I feel like it wouldn't solve a distraction issue because you could still use a wired one. So what's really the difference?
Dan Wagner? Oh, you want the second? Are you sure? We can wait.
Hello, everybody. Dan Wagner. I reside at Two Johnny Place. I am socialized teacher at Columbia High School, and I'm the EGTA president. I wanted to say hello to the board officially for the first official meeting, say that we're really, really excited to work together with the board and collaborate. I know that there are some concerns about the cellphone ban, but I also want to say that we're incredibly excited about the cellphone ban. This first week has been absolutely amazing. It's really weird having kids actually look at me all class. That's a new development that I haven't experienced, I think, since 2010. So we're incredibly excited about this, and EGTA is really excited to work collaboratively with the board, with the administration, and have a wonderful school year. Thank you.
Moving into regular business, the NISBA convention? Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Have a question. So if, for example, I'm named in this, do I vote on it, or do I need to abstain when it comes to?
No, it's time for you to vote. It's just authorization for you to attend.
I have just a quick comment. You know, for anyone who don't know what the NISBA conference is, where board members develop additional skills on effective governance of school districts. And there's two usual main NISBA conferences. You have the Summer Education Expo, and you have the Fall NISBA Convention, which is coming in October. And, you know, it's been very insightful just to learn like from other districts, the challenges that they have, because we see policies all the time, like, for example, the cellphone ban, which is going on now. And when something is new, sometimes it's hard to calibrate it right, you know, and that's where networking with other boards, other school districts gives us an opportunity to figure out, you know, what is other districts seeing, you know, what was the practice? Some people might have implemented it earlier, and we studied that with this current ban and things like that. So just thinking about this conference, I'm looking forward to going to the convention, and thank you for the opportunity.
Can I get a motion to approve? Sam, second. Robert? All those in favor? Okay, authorization to approve board membership in the New York State Caucus of Black School Board Members. Any questions or comments about that one?
I just want to say I'm excited about joining the School Board Black Caucus, you know, networking with, furtherment, the same thing with NISBA, with a specific lens towards equity issues, and I look forward to that as well.
Jesse, this is your second year on that, right? Did you do that last year?
I did not. I went to some of the events and things, but not an active member. This is formalizing, yep.
Motion to approve? Robert, second. Sam, all those in favor? Okay, moving on to committee reports.
Okay. Well, I wanted to announce that we have selected an internal candidate for our mentor coordinator in the district. We recently had our external coordinator resign, and we actually went to EGTA, and we approved an MOA memorandum of agreement for all of our students here, where we negotiated to become an internal candidate. So we interviewed six teachers that wanted to become a mentor coordinator, which basically they oversee our mentor program where the teacher, the veteran teacher, will actually work with a new hired teacher and help support them. It's part of a requirement that they have to do, but it's also a way for building partnership and having support. We interviewed six candidates, and they actually all did an excellent job. They had six questions they all had to answer, and they were all had varying degrees of experience, and we ended up selecting our candidate, and I'd like to announce tonight that it is Christine Kozak. She is a high school math teacher. She is a, was an experienced mentor herself. She is very eager to promote the innovative professional development and ongoing support for mentor and mentee pairs. She has experience with coordinating large events. She's organized, and she's great with time management, and she is a positive role model to the district and the whole. So we felt like she was an excellent candidate. And we've actually already met our first mentor steering committee on Monday, which we were excited to get the work moving along. And we actually talked about, you know, what's been working at the committee. Christine was there, and she was able to participate in that. And what we need to improve for the future, we actually discussed our blueprint. We have a blueprint that will be on the website. Or we actually, it actually talks about if you want to become a teacher someday, this is how we would support you. And just trying to promote being a teacher out there, some of you that want to be one. And what's really great about that, we were then able to do our mentor pairing. So we had great collaborative conversations, and we have six that we're approving tonight mentors that are going to be hopefully getting approved tonight. So excited about that. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Quick comment. I just love to see internal, you know, elevation in the development of skills, you know. I think it always worked great, instant credibility, right, and all of those sorts of things, trust, things that sometimes when you're new, it takes time to earn. So I think it's great directionally where we're going.
Yeah, and she's already proving to be an excellent candidate. So, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So I wanted to bring several items to the board's attention tonight before we get into our larger discussion. So as some of our legacy board members may remember, there had been some communication with the town historian regarding searching for the remains of a Civil War soldier on the property of the Red Mill School. The town historian has contacted me and said that she is going to be stopping any endeavor of looking for those remains. However, she is looking for approval to put basically a plaque of commemoration of that war soldier that she strongly believes that there is evidence that his remains are somewhere on the property. I will be sending this out to the board. This does not require a board vote. I just didn't want our newest board members not to have a little background information on what this is. I'll be sending this out, just looking for any comments or feedback. As long as the board is comfortable with it, like I said, it does not require official board action. However, as you are proprietors of the property as board members, I just want to make sure if we agree to put a plaque on the property that everyone is informed and we're able to get any information back to the town that we want. So I'll be scanning this out so you can all see a copy. It's very simple. She's already spoken with Mr. Bickel as well about a conspicuous place to put it on the property. Very careful about language, as it is an elementary school property. Use it as a historical teaching tool rather than perhaps a headstone or braystone or anything like that. So I'll be sending this out just so you're aware. The other next piece is, is that I was having some conversation with Mr. Harkin regarding the graduation ceremony. One of the things that we are watching very closely, and we've watched it over the last several years, due to the addition of new holidays in the calendar, due to the addition of new pilots and Regents exams in the calendar, the graduation ceremony is getting later and later and later in the month of June. One of the concepts that we had talked about was perhaps moving the ceremony up a week, two weeks, somewhere in the middle. One of the biggest concerns I had, and Mr. Harkin's going to do some research on this for me as well, is making sure that we don't have students that are dependent on a Regents exam that would impact their ability to to walk across the stage. Keeping in mind that the ceremony is just that. It's a ceremony. The graduation is the successful completion of the credit required for graduation. I can tell you from speaking with fellow superintendents, both in Mid-Hudson and now here in the Capital District, everyone is keeping an eye on this, that the ceremony is getting later and later. We have started to get some feedback from families that when they're trying to book events, they're up against the July 4th weekend. Either they can't get things, or it is cost prohibitive. It's getting more expensive to get some of those venues. So Mr. Harkin and I had started to discuss some dates. Again, this is not something that requires a vote of the board, if you will, but it is a good discussion item. If we look at the calendar for June of 2026, I'm just going to pull it up for a minute. Classes end, Mr. Harkin, correct me if I'm wrong, on the 16th?
Right.
Classes end on the 16th. The 19th is a school holiday. So one of the potential dates that we have discussed for this year is the 18th. It would be a Thursday night. We had also discussed the potential of even going back another week, either to the 12th or the 13th. Understanding and with full respect to our seniors, they're pretty much done once June 1st comes. So the missing two days of school, I don't know that we would see most of them anyway. Or we could simply leave it where it was tentatively looked at on the 27th for this year, but it is something that I wanted to open up the conversation because this will set some work for Mr. Harkin with the high school staff and also with Hudson Valley Community College to make sure that we can target a date. So I'd love to hear some feedback on this, just so we know what direction to have in.
I have a quick comment. You know, we were all young once, right? And my only concern about an earlier, earlier date is exactly that, right, attendance. You know, I think, you know, as tone setting for education excellence and all of those things, I like the idea of not lessening the expectation for attendance. So I love the idea of let's go all the way to the finish line, right? Obviously, like I said, we were all young once and understand the dynamics of how that work. But just in regards to governance, tone, academics, you know, I like the idea, just from my perspective, of a later graduation date.
Can I ask you a question about that? When you say later graduation date, do you mean like at the end of classes or at the end of Regents?
So I'm not like, I'm not as concerned about the Regents exam. I mean, like, yes, yes, closer to the end of classes more so. Yep, and with flex too, but.
Why, the question, 19th isn't Friday. Is it because the day is off, you can't do the 20th?
We could look at the 20th. Yeah, we absolutely could look at the 20th. It would have to be available.
My question would be about when fourth quarter grades are due and how much pressure this is going to put on teachers of seniors and how they're going to get that information completed. It changes the expectations.
And this is all important feedback that I noticed as Mr. Harkin discussed with the high school staff as well.
I guess I would also be wondering about, you know, I know their graduation rehearsals and everything that are often done during Regents Week. So would we be pulling seniors out of classes, doing, like, what would that look like as well, and how much is that going to disrupt the end of classes?
Yep, understood.
Did you say June 19th? That's a holiday.
June, we'd have to either go to the 18th or the 20th, or the other. The 19th is a holiday.
So I would just ask Holly as our expedition student person to also talk to the students. I don't know if Mr. Harkin plan on doing that?
Yeah, I'll ask you guys after.
I would like to.
We haven't discussed it with the staff yet.
Ooh, okay.
I'm going to be in Florida tomorrow, and Holly will obviously share some information. We're all a little gossip back here right now. We lost the points about states. Again, we won a very successful graduation on the last Saturday of June, but we have got complaints last year that it does kind of still lie for it. We're prohibited from partying, because it's the whole way to the week. Not a lot, but if we get a few, I love our graduation. I'll do whatever I want to do. I just think that it's something that we should look at. We are also the last school to graduate, starting school, and the last one to graduate. A lot of parents have told me that after the successful graduation, so.
I support it 100%. Go earlier, go earlier.
Yeah. My quick question, like, recognizing that you're going to speak to the educators and give student feedback, do you have like a gut feeling about, just if you were to say today, not sticking you to any deadline, but just saying like, where ideally, just today, how you're feeling?
I think if I talk to them today, they're going to be hesitant a little bit a week ahead of time, because it's new. But I think a couple of days would be even beneficial. It's also, you remember too, it's the longest days of the year. So we went at 5 o'clock, and we ended at 6:45, which were about an hour and 45 minutes. It's usually two hours of daylight after taking pictures. My children will graduate on a Friday in July at 5:00. There's tons of people that can make it. I think it would hopefully too, having exams the next day, maybe we'll get more staff members to come. Those of you that have been to our graduation and get to go on that light in the back on that break and see the kids, it's an amazing experience. 12 years of education coming to fruition. So I think, hopefully, we get more staff members to come. I think they should really experience that at some point in their life. We've all had an impact on them.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Harkin, we can continue to work together on that, and we can see what we can do. Great, thank you. Okay, the last item that I want to discuss with the board tonight, and the board has a copy of the presentation in paper in front of you, was some research that the district had completed back starting in 2018 and pre-COVID regarding looking at school start time. I'm just going to summarize the report for you on what's in front of you. Again, being mindful that this data is now 78 years old from when it was collected. What was looked at was the possibility, in short, of reversing start times for our elementary schools versus our secondary schools. And there is a strong body of research out there that shows that student attendance, student academic performance is stronger when you have the ability to do so. That does not mean that this does not come without significant challenges, especially in a larger school district, and especially in a region where not all schools are doing that. So if you flip through the report, there's just some important pieces that you'd want to take note of. The report itself took into account things as requirements of the State Education Department in regards to attendance. It did do some high-level data analysis on Program GPA and Regents results. One of the biggest impacts of looking at this was in regards to transportation within the district, just because geographically our district is so large. We had discussed the impact on athletics and extracurriculars. What budget impacts would there be? Doing a transportation study is not an inexpensive proposition. You'd have to bring in a third-party consultant, and that can be quite costly depending on how deep we ask the consultant to go. Another big topic of conversation was regarding childcare in the community. Right now, a lot of the way childcare agencies are structured, a lot of our seniors do go after school and volunteer or are paid to engage in that work. And then the last piece was on family and community impact. I will tell you, the data that is in here was very telling on feelings, but just caution the board that this is old data. This was pre-COVID data. I think we really want to look at things like Bureau of Labor and Statistics data. How many people are working from home now? How many are not? Would this change? I would also encourage the board to look carefully at what our elementary school parents were saying. There was a lot of concern from the elementary school parents, not only on start time itself, because transportation in that algorithm, if you will, was saying that elementary schools were going to have to start essentially at the time that the high school is starting now, and some of the families and their anecdotal comments were very concerned about that. The other piece is that stood out to me was the committee's conclusion when the stat was three bullets. We need more information. We need to go back and check with the community, and then we really need to decide what specific proposals do we want to share with the community. Had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Simons on this. He said this is really where it left off. There was a couple of months in between where it had paused, and then, excuse me, the impact of COVID started to set in, and at that point, it got dropped. So again, I wanted to highlight this for you. I know there have been some questions on it. I'm glad to answer as much as I can now. If we were going to research this, I would just caution the board, we should move slowly on this because this is a high-impact decision. And we want to be careful of the costs also that would be associated. I've worked with a transportation consultant many times before, and just will be forthright. They are expensive. You could run upwards of about $25,000 just for them to do a a study on routing and what that looks like within the district. I don't know what the recommendations could lead to at the same time. If they start to make recommendations on you need more busing, well, we're having trouble meeting our transportation needs as it stands. We just want to be careful of that as an impact at the same time. So like you said, I'm glad to answer as many questions as I can right now on this. I was not here for this, but I've done my research with Mr. Simons, and I'll be glad to address whatever I can.
My understanding was there was one or more transportation studies done in conjunction with this committee. Are you aware of those reports, and can we get access to those?
I am. It was, and there is reference to it in the report. They looked at a two versus a three-tiered run. The difference is now we have consolidated some of The difference is now, um, we have consolidated some of the runs. Um, Mark Halsey, our assistant director was part of this and he and I had an opportunity to speak. The other piece is, is it definitively regardless, if you go to a two or a three tier run, you're going to have to hire more drivers and potentially have more buses available to do it. And then I think we just need to be very mindful of right now, the EV mandate still stands. That will have a bearing on this and, and we need to just be very cautious about that. That's all. Transportation is a large impact in something like this and it's just, it's an uncertain variable for us. Even before we start to talk about this in regards to the EV mandate, if that changes, it could take some pressure off of this. But right now it would be something that would have to be considered.
So this is something that, I'm sorry, this is something that could be incorporated into our strategic planning as well, right? Long-term, we're still working on that at the end of this year. So maybe.
Well, I, I'm getting ready to present that at the next meeting. So I, I don't want to. It did not come up during the course of the conversation, so it'd be hesitant to throw it in.
No, I'm not saying we should, but I have to stick, this is something, we have so many other things to worry about now and deal with. Um, unless, unless we're able to get a grant for the 25,000, I don't know that they're available. You know, I wouldn't, I would, I would personally be hesitant to want to do some kind of transportation study.
I, I totally hear what you're saying about the strategic plan in the long-term view of like, uh, cost, like, as you said, it's, it's a high impact proposition. Um, just in regards to doing the study, um, I, I just think that sometimes more information about even do we want to go in that direction? So I think the study is kind of like, you know, is this something the board is willing to consider? Um, having as a high impact project and, and even thinking about the bigger budgetary considerations like staffing, buses, how does EV play into that picture? So I think before we even could get into, is it practical? I think what, like, like in my mind, what I'm hearing is how is it going to benefit kids, right? Like, like at the end of the day, it's, it's, it sounds like there's a positive benefit unto the high schoolers. There, we may have some concerns with parents and then logistically how it would even look. And I just think that, you know, when looking at how to benefit kids, I always think more information sometimes can be better. Um, that, that's just my view. I do know we're in a tight budgetary constraint, but this is a one-time expenditure, not something that recurs. Um, so, so, so in that way and getting the information. Um, but I do think it's worth looking at what information we had previously and it sounds like you did some digging on that. But even before getting to the study, maybe having some conversations around, you know, do we have something that enough already or, you know?
Yeah, maybe even starting with engaging like our transportation team and house, just to sort of get a sense of bus routes. Um, couple of, could, could you share this electronically? There's some graphs that just are color coded. Um, and then the, oh, I think what also would be helpful is the, um, minimum required time instructional time. Um, and I guess are we, when we talk about something like this, are we talking about like an, like a flop, right? So it would go elementary, like a reverse of the current schedule? Or are we talking about just trying to like shave some increment of minutes?
So my understanding at the time, and again, I'll go back and ask some questions on this, was it was as simple as just a flop?
Okay.
One of the things that was not taken into account, uh, was could we do that? Could we look at instructional minutes now? That's a sacrifice because if we do have it to to shave, if you will, are we impacting programs from the start time?
Just to be, I don't want to, I don't support shaving instructional time, but just looking, it looks like there's some variation in the length of school day. And I wonder if even a little bit of kind of analysis on the sheet can start the conversation of could we at least get to seven twenty, seven thirty? Is that impossible though with the middle school runs that need to start immediately after? But you know, maybe there's some kind of minor shift versus something.
And though, uh, I won't say those are easy, but those are probably easier conversations to look at start times where they stand without switching elementary. Still, I think your course of action is probably very accurate to talk about, let's get transportation in here and at least have a high level conversation. The other piece, just, and this is only anecdotal feedback, having worked in a district that did this, some of the feedback that districts have gotten, when you're within a BOSI's, when you're within an athletic council, if everyone doesn't do the same thing, it is a challenge. So I can tell you, Hornwall in Orange County is on the east side of the school district, right on the Hudson River. Their BOSI's is Center County and some of the school districts that they competed with were on the west side of the county. They went one year and they switched back. I heard Bethlehem in this region did exactly the same. Troy, who has done this now for several years, struggles repeatedly with some instructional time and getting their students out for athletic contests as well. This is something, and this is just opinion, there, there's no data behind this. When districts look at this, I'd love to see it done regionally because again, can't dispute the research. Research is the young people here sitting in front of us will do better if their day starts at nine versus seven ten. The, the data is very revealing on that, but systematically, if a region would entertain that together, the process gets much, much easier. Because there's just so much relationship between districts, BOSI's, athletics, everything that comes with.
I think too, you're going to impact because you're going to have parents and kids from elementary. And in winter time, when kids is getting on the bus, you know, outside of six forty, you know, depending upon arrangements. You know, so, so all of those sorts of impacts too, you know, just, just looking forward, but I definitely think it's worth looking at and discussing. You know, if there's, you know, so.
Maybe there is an opportunity to kind of encourage a regional, like just transportation conversation. The EV bus thing is huge, right? We talked about needing to have comparable charging stations. This could be sort of a preliminary conversation around some of the transportation theme.
So I have a question. Um, I know this is a discussion, but is this something that the board has agreed they want to pursue? Pick up where we left off. I don't know, because I'm trying to understand where this fits in the planning for the school year. Cause this is a huge undertaking. So.
My understanding of the request for just discussion on this was, it was, it was something that had been deeply researched. That there was, we were on the, uh, the cusp of trying to make decisions, COVID hit and it just stopped.
Right.
Is it something that we want to abandon altogether to say we've had a discussion on it, maybe bring up a little bit more data? Or do we want to reopen and start again? My caution is if that's the direction that I get from the board to do so, we're kind of going back with maybe a little iteration to the starting line again, because this data is very old. The work, the working population looks very differently.
Yes.
The people aren't different, but the working conditions perhaps look very different with remote work, with childcare issues. So again, right now this is conversation, I think subsequent to this, maybe a couple of meetings out, I will need that direct in that question.
Okay.
But I think this is just conversation right now.
But I mean, you're talking about these kind of implementation plans can take years.
Agreed.
So, and it's a tremendous amount of administrative work.
Yes.
I like Sam's idea, you know, that idea of having a regional meeting. I don't know if it ever happened, but I think that's a great point.
So I think I can give you some history of being for the BOSI's. There's been a lot of these attempts in the past and they haven't come to fruition for a variety of reasons. I think if, if Dr. Coats wants to bring it to Dr. Cruz or the BOSI's again for a regional look, I'm sure it's, we're bringing up, there's a lot of uh, history around trying to get a regional transportation moving in the area. As we're not dealing with just our region, the Questor BOSI's, you're in a cap region BOSI's, because the way we cross over into schools and kind of scheduling and things like that. Um, so it's a lot of other moving parts.
And you're dealing with districts of four to 6,000 students versus four to 600 students.
Yes, it's a.
It's not an easy.
It's, it's worth, I think if the board wants to educate on those kinds of things, it's probably a good thing to bring back for Dr. Cruz. And even to explore the, uh, school boards and some of the school districts as well.
So I will do some more of the data research, uh, some of the original research that was done. I'll get that out to the board and then we can just keep the conversation open. We can make some decisions in the future and what, if anything, we want to do with. Great. Thank you.
As far as I know, no table motions. The old business. Incentive, does anybody have any questions, comments? All right. Motion to approve? Cindy, the second. Sam, all of us in favor? Any new business? Second public forum? Want to go again?
Okay.
Board forum starting.
Um, just wanted to say thanks to the two donors in the, in the consent agenda. Um, Next Step Federal Credit Union that donated the eight backpacks full of school supplies uh, and the Delug family for the, uh, for the headsets. District's very appreciative. So are students.
I'm just wishing everyone a successful start to the year. Um, you know, it's very exciting, uh, and educators, we, we wish you a wonderful start as well and look forward to all of the work to come.
Okay. No, set. Thanks. And we need to get to the session. Uh, so we need to go into executive session to uh, to discuss employment history of an individual.
I was making the motion.
Oh, motion.
I'm sorry.
RP, the second, Robert, all those in favor?